No comments, no questions. Okay, we can get down to business. What we want to accomplish, I think, tonight is to kind of outline our scope so we can take it to the board. A proposed timeline to kind of set expectations for everyone. Then we'll do our meeting schedule and talk about the future topics. Robin had a great idea to copy the old results section that was done under Tuesday, which, as I recall, when I first saw it, I wasn't impressed with it because it seemed to understand the SMART goals. So that's something that we can review at our leisure. Give us a little background.
Yeah, exactly. I saw it, but I gave it back to Dr. Bird.
I brought some information too.
Okay, great, great. So let's try to get a fence around our scope. I think we know that we're going to develop measurable criteria. I think that's unequivocal. And I think we're going to develop it that aligns with our goals and will be used in the evaluation. Are we also going to do the soft skills part, which is kind of non-measurable?
I would suggest that we do. This, I, can I go through what I found?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I found this, I was doing a study and I found this from Michigan. Michigan actually requires that their superintendents be, that all the superintendents stay evaluated by this method. So the soft skills that they have are governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance. And then they get into instructional leadership, student growth, progress toward district-wide goals, they talk about SMART goals. What I liked about this is like they have the rubric, but this rubric is really specific. So for governance and board relations, let's say, information has established mutually agreed upon protocols with the board regarding communication, executes these protocols consistently. This is highly effective. So what I liked about these, and I can send, is they're specific. A lot of times rubrics aren't specific enough. So, community relations, parent feedback is one of the things that he would be marked on with using this. Actively seeks parental input, this is highly effective, creates methods for parents to be actively involved in decision-making as well as setting and supporting district-wide goals. Now, these are soft things again, but I think that these could be measurable as well.
I think so too. The ones you've read, I think are still measurable.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I think, that sounds like a great start and it has validity.
Yeah.
Because other state has done it and then we could maybe develop the
Do you want me to make that piece of room?
Yeah.
The stuff underneath of that. So just for the
And then it also has percentage, like the weight of the categories varies. Like governance and board relations is 20 percent. Community relations is 15 percent, staff relations 15 percent, business and finance is 20 percent, instructional leadership is 30 percent.
That sounds nice, makes sense.
So, and then other components.
So you actually get a percentage score?
Yes. Yep, yep. So, I don't know, do you want?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great, that's a great instrument. So we're not only going to do the criteria, we're also going to do the instrument.
Yeah, and I just, I'm not sure we are
Because I'm still trying to get the fence.
Right, right. That's probably beyond the fence, but I just
So we're going to do the instrument and the criteria. And that sounds like a really good instrument. But I'm going to press for all of them to be measurable.
Yes, yeah.
Because ideally, in my mind, you get to the end of the year, when you do the evaluation and it's no big deal, you just go and add it up. You've been doing it all year, so.
I just want to, I agree with the measurable, we need macro measurable and we need a micro measurable. I don't like seeing graduated increases, yet the test scores decrease. I also, I also think you have to look at the achievement gap. That's a micro. You know, are you making progress in the achievement gap? It might not show if you just look at the overall test scores. So you have to drill down to the next level. And he needs to understand that that's, I can speak for myself, that's my biggest goal, is taking care of that achievement.
Well, that's our number one goal. That's why I say, we've agreed it's going to be aligned with our goals. Our number one goal is student achievement. Underneath of that, the gap is the number one. And then we can, we can break all those down, but we need to have it aligned to the goals. And underneath of that is that the board is not going to change the goals.
Right.
So somehow we have to bring that to light. If, if we're going to change those goals, we need to do it quickly on that timeline. We're going to need to change those goals quickly so that we can align and still meet the deadlines to, you know, to talk to us or present it.
And there's other, I think, specific goals for him in his first year. For example, you know, I don't think we can expect to see huge gains in the first year. But what I would expect by, say, three quarters of the year, whatever we decide, date we decide, I want to see his plan. A plan that we all, that he vets through his staff and he comes to us and says, this is my plan, and then we either accept or tweak or whatever and say, okay, that's the plan and that's what, the way we're going to go. And we might have to adjust the criteria based on his plan that we approve. Would you agree with that?
I think the plan, we, you know, a component of the plan would have to be how he's going to monitor the plan, right? Because that's
To achieve the goals that we set.
Because that's a big problem we have right now. You read, we've got all, we've got inconsistencies throughout the district so much in terms of how things are being done. So the monitoring will take care of the inconsistencies.
And that's a big problem, the monitoring's a big problem, because when you do a measure that only is done once annually, you've lost it. Because it's only done once annually, there's no interim goals. I mean, ideally, each quarter you want to see something, right? I agree with you that his first year is building the foundation. And we can, we can do that.
It's like the year he better produce.
And that foundation better start producing on the second year. But the first year, yeah, he has to build a foundation, he has to show us a plan. So we're going to do the instrument, we're going to do the soft skills, we're going to do the SMART goals, which is, everybody knows SMART. And the achievable, what I was saying the other night is the achievable, the A in there. We can't do that without him.
Yeah, attainable, I think that he
Attainable, achievable.
Yeah, we got it, yeah, yeah.
You can't do that without the person that's doing the work agreeing to it.
That's right.
And now we, we have data that we can get from test scores, we have data we can get from SAT scores, and SAT and ACT and so on. But we also need to get some soft survey data, you know, a survey instrument that we should be the ones that build, that we give out to teachers, we give out to staff, we give out to parents. Now, with teachers and staff, we can mandate that you turn it in.
Right.
They're employees, you can say, turn it in me. Parents, we can't mandate. And so we have to take those results with a grain of salt, because generally, when you have that kind of a survey, you get the wildly happy and the wildly pissed off.
Right.
And the people in the middle don't just throw it in the trash can. But it does give you insights for that soft part that you're talking about.
Have we looked at the, does anybody, are any, either of you familiar with, or any of you familiar with what the state survey, you know, as part of the report card now, there's that component? And there's, it's based on teacher surveys and parent surveys?
Students.
And I'm wondering what that looks like?
I looked at it, but I can't remember enough to speak to it.
I mean, so we might want to look, I mean, before we reinvent our own, but we might want to look at that and then take it
My question is, is when we do these surveys, who will these surveys come to? No, you said when we come over these teachers and stuff through the surveys, what course will we take, how will the surveys come to?
Draw data and somebody that will take it and then put it in graphic form so we can look at it and ask the right questions. Because if we, if we think we're going to go down every teacher's comment, that's probably not realistic. But you give it to a trusted agent.
Well, that's, that's my question. Who's a trusted agent?
Well, we'll work that out tonight. We just want to get a wall around what we're going to do in the committee. Those are the kinds of things that take a lot longer than you think to work out.
Yeah, the execution is tough.
We're going to do the instrument, we're going to do the criteria, we're going to do SMART goals, we're going to do soft skills, we're going to align it with our goals. That's pretty much our scope, huh?
I think so.
We're going instrument, we're going the criteria?
Isn't it good? That's when I was looking at it and I thought all of these, and the fact that it's a percent, that's put in the cart before the horse, but
Oh, yeah, I'm used to the percent thing. And I'm used to the effective room for improvement. That's not the way it's been done historically.
Okay.
But it's a pretty good one. Historically, it's either been yes or no.
Oh, yeah, no, you can't have the yes or no.
Yeah, historically, the evaluation's been done, the ones I've been involved with, is somebody comes in and writes something up about how everybody feels. And that's pretty much it. We like him.
So this is something that I came, that also I got from the website for the National School Boards Association. And if you'll, it just says, the standards for judging the superintendent's performance are understood by both the superintendent and the members of the board. The board has agreed on a time and place for evaluation. The board is assured that all of its members will attend. All members understand that their individual assessments of the superintendent will be compiled into a composite evaluation that will be discussed. I like that idea. I don't know if you guys have done that before. Is that what you just said? That you, all individuals redone it and then it's been compiled?
No.
Yeah.
One person would come in and say, here, I wrote this up, we like him. And everybody agreed to it. But before that, how'd it go?
Before that, everyone would have their individual instruments and with the name on it, and then it would be compiled together so that it came out one.
That's the way to do it.
And then any comments, everyone's individual comments would be on there without their names. But whoever made comments, the comments were on there, because there's a section in that compilation where if you ranked it low and if there was a comment by it, then later on that comment was taken out and put down there so that you would know that at E point one, someone said whatever it was that they were saying. So if it was, you know, above average or average or below, someone ranked it below, that comment was included on there. It just didn't identify which board member said the comment, but the comment was, was on there. So one instrument was given, but before the one instrument, everyone had the chance to rate it, so it would say, whatever.
Can we get a copy of the whole instrument?
Yeah, that would be good.
So that we can look at it?
Yeah.
Because that's a lot more the way it should be done than what I've witnessed.
And it also says here, and I've done this as a principal many times, that I do a self-evaluation on the same instrument. And then that's, have you done self-evaluations with them before? So we take the instrument and before we meet with him, he's done a self-devision, and he brings that to the table
Exactly.
With our information that we
That's, that's the way I've always done it.
Yeah, it's been done that way, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
The board gets a chance to read it before we make final
Yeah, yeah.
This, well, this is not, this is something we put in his contract or whatever. It says, it is understood that when evaluation forms are used, the board still may wish to address other matters to which the superintendent. I think we addressed that in his contract, but I, you know
We are going to have to review the contract requirements.
Yes.
Make sure we line up to them.
Okay, so that's, these are just the main things that I wanted to highlight from the School Contracts Association.
Can I get us, I think we got the scope. Can I get us to our timeline? And then we can come back and talk about some of these other things. And I'm going to, I don't know what our timeline is going to be, but I believe we want to give him an evaluation at the end of December.
That's right. We need, once you're live, I would love to see him come in here and we say
This is it, yeah.
This is what we think.
Yeah.
This is what do you think?
Yeah, we do have
Because it'll take time after that for him to agree to it.
So that's actually in the contract too, in terms of, I think, the first, his first full evaluation is by, I think it was December 31 of 2020. So, and then, but there was like a half-year evaluation or whatever.
I wasn't sure, I couldn't remember if that was optional or not, that first six-month one.
I just read it for the umpteenth
But I would think if we're, yeah, if we're paying part of his annuity, we should do it, we should do an evaluation before that.
Before he gets that, yeah.
Just to get him to have it.
Yeah, right.
He gave us a 90-day plan during the interview process.
He did.
And that's a good place to start.
Right.
That's true, that's true.
To see what, if he does what he says he's going to do in that 90 days.
Because, you know, another point to that is, we won't, you know, the academic data won't be, won't be, won't be ready yet. So we want to use, it doesn't make sense for us to use last year's data or this year's data. We need what just happened so that if we're going to make expectations for growth and that kind of stuff, we need to use the most current. Robin?
So you do get data at the end of, somewhere around in October or November?
Right.
Because that's what we use for the state of the schools, when the board to come out and get. So you'll have some, you'll have test scores and stuff that data comes out that
But that's kind of baseline, isn't it?
Right.
That's what his base is.
Right, that's the starting point, but we, but we don't
That's what he wants, we want him to build
We want him to build on. But I think, I think that we need to know where we're starting though before we can give him those.
To be measurable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think when you review this, the old one, I think, as I recall, it was pretty good about that. It was saying 1% increase over the year and stuff like that, which I think is great. And we'll review that. But on our timeline, I'm not sure if we can get it done by July.
Maybe what we have ready for July is a review of his entrance plan and say that this is a, for the first half of the year, we are, it's a formative, a formative evalu, a formative based on his entry plan and that we'll have the yearly one
At the start of school, maybe, you know, have something, you know, we should be able to give him a first draft. We might not be able to have. But if we go with something like this in general terms, the day he gets here, and say, this is what we're looking at, you got your 98 plan, at the end of the 90 days, we want to finalize this beast, which is the start of the school year.
And we want to add in then the more specific academic data, because we'll have it then.
Yeah.
We'll have it then. Okay, that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, makes sense. So our first, our first benchmark would be
An instrument, a draft instrument.
September 1st? No, I'm just talking about the timeline.
Yeah.
September 1st?
Well, I would think we could maybe give him a draft general instrument to say, this is draft, so you have a chance to look at it. And surely, this is really good.
I know. I was, when I was reading, I thought it was
This could be, you know, adapt to whatever we want, but
Certainly the format.
Here's, here's a draft instrument of what your evaluation will be like. Now, the specifics we need to talk about, we agree, this is what we think in a draft, come back to us and so on. But by the 1st of September, we want to finalize this thing.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Are we agreed, the 1st of September, we're going to have a finalized tool and criteria?
Do you think we can do that?
I think we can.
Well, I think that leads into the very next agenda item.
Meeting schedules.
Our meeting schedule.
Okay.
You know, we probably can do it, but
Going to have to meet fairly often.
But we're going to, we're going to have to meet fairly often.
Yeah.
So should we set up weekly to start and see how much progress? And the more homework we do, the less
Right.
The less meetings we have to have. So, okay, so we'll meet weekly?
Which days?
And that's the next one, yeah, that's the next one. Now, I'm, I'm pretty darn flexible, so.
So if you're meeting weekly, Mondays are the only one, well, that's up to you. But currently, Mondays have been ad hoc policy. Then you have the second Tuesday that's available, because Wednesday and Thursday are taken up by committees. And Fridays, all Fridays have been open.
Friday.
So you bounce between Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday have committee meeting, either board meeting or committee meetings. Monday has ad hoc policy. That's the only one that's weekly.
Could we meet earlier in the day on Fridays?
You tell me, I
Okay, I've got, well, Bluffton Graduations next Friday
Right.
At 7:00. On the 7th I could meet, 14th I could meet, the 21st I'm in Boston, the 28th, I get on a plane at 6:20, so if we met earlier in the day
Like what?
I don't know, 3, 2:30?
You're the one with the restriction. You tell us.
Okay.
2:30?
Yeah, I think 2:30.
I'm only, not available on the 14th of June. That's about, that's the only Friday that I'll be out of town.
So we're talking every Friday at 2:30? Let me check my schedule.
Yeah, you check yours.
Now, the district office is closed on Fridays, because we start summer hours. I just remember that, so.
But we should, we still should be able to get in here, I mean, Elrod Goss should be able to get in, I mean, Elrod Goss, the proposal, I believe, is, the place I go in today, so.
Yeah, but they don't mandate it closing for economic reasons?
Turn off the power.
Turn off the power and start the air conditioning?
We do, we do. It's right, because Fridays is a off day.
Yeah, that's usually one of the reasons they do that, is to save some expenses, yeah. Okay.
That might be a little uncomfortable.
Yeah. Thursdays, what was wrong with Thursdays?
So Thursday, the 13th, that's a fine, right now in June, the only Thursday that's taken is the 13th, and that's finance, June 13th.
Hilton Head Graduation's on the 6th.
Correct. But starting the next week after, after graduation, so June 13th is finance. There is nothing on June 20th or the 27th this time.
I can do that.
I'm, I'm out of town the 20th, but there's going to be a time, yeah, yeah. So we can't, we can't do that, but
And you can do it before, I mean, if you want to do it before, because finance starts at 5:30 at Hilton Head Library.
If we wanted to do one on the 13th, are you out of town on the 13th?
Yes, I'm out of town on the 13th.
Okay. I mean, we could do it at, since the finance committee, we could do that one at Hilton Head maybe, for convenience of the library, but it's just me and you.
Yeah, we could, I mean, I don't really want to bump into those people.
Yeah.
Or you could come over here on Wednesday, we have that Wednesday.
What's on Wednesday's?
Wednesday is operations at 4:30.
And academic, yeah. But academic is at 4:30 on the 26th.
Academic, yes, on the 26th.
I was going to say maybe on, 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 the Wednesday before that, what do you have that Monday?
Monday, the 10th, that's
That's one of the budget things.
Why don't we say we're going to meet weekly and then each week we'll figure out, we'll just figure it out.
Each week we'll figure out.
Which day?
Yes, yeah, that's good, good thinking.
Okay, so the week of the 27th. Next week.
Yep, next week, our next meeting.
Our next meeting's when?
Well, that's where they're deciding.
So Thursday, the 30th, the ad hoc policy is meeting on the 30th. Currently don't have anything on the 29th, or meeting on the 28th.
Is the district office still open on the 31st?
Yes.
Well, it's Bluffton High School.
And that's graduation, but if you
But at 2:30, I could still get there by 7:00, I mean
6:15, I think.
Oh, we have to be there at 6:15? Okay. Do you think that makes it too long? Too long a day?
No, those graduations are pretty long.
Okay. On the 29th, I have a town hall at the
Right, you do.
Bluffton Library.
At the Bluffton Library at 5:45, so I would just have to be gone.
That's not good for me.
Okay.
The 30th?
The 30th?
The 4th.
At Bluffton Middle?
At Bluffton Middle.
Okay.
Before policy?
What time?
Policy is at 5:30, so do you
We could go 4 to 5:30, if you want. If that's open, if we can get in there.
We have a St. Helena fundraiser.
Okay.
I've got to go to it at 5:30.
Okay, busy time of year.
St. Elena, not St. Helena, in New Zee, in New Zee.
Once schools get done, we shouldn't have many
Yeah, because the week after next is all graduation, so we've got to get something next week.
We do have to get something next, what's Monday? Oh, Memorial Day, sorry.
Tuesday's budget.
Yeah. Wednesday, I have that town hall, but if we could meet earlier in the day, like at 1:00 or 2:00?
I have to drive my wife to the doctor at 2:40.
Yeah, tight up that morning.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys are too busy.
Now, we're back to the 30th and the 31st.
Well, we could meet before the board meeting, on the 28th.
We have an agenda setting.
Oh, you have an agenda setting, okay.
But I would be fine with coming at like 2 o'clock, our agenda setting's at 4:30. I'd be fine with just coming at 2:00 and hanging out until agenda setting.
How about 2:30?
2:30, yeah.
What date?
2:30 on the 28th?
Because you're going to be here for the board meeting.
For the board meeting, okay.
And it's here, it's here.
And it's here. All right, that's our next meeting.
And what's our, what's our job? What's our homework?
Review the old results section
Okay.
And the, and your handout.
Okay.
And think of some, you know, think how we're going to do the instrument.
Okay.
I would think that's the first thing, because I think we can just agree. And then you're going to send out the old, the old instrument, the way it used to be used, and we'll compare that to this
Perfect.
And come up with a hybrid, if necessary.
So what's, your scope is
We're going to do the instrument and the criteria. We're going to do soft skills and hard skills. I noticed that Michigan thing, they thought finance was a soft skill, I've always considered that to be a hard skill.
Yeah, I do too.
It's going to be aligned with the, with the board's goals. That's really important, because we're going to have to remind the board if we want to change the goals, we need to do it now.
Yeah.
Board's goals that they have?
Board's goals.
So do you want me to print out so that you can be reminded of what your goals are?
Well, they're on every, every agenda.
Well, made, yeah, board meeting agenda.
Yeah, every board meeting agenda. And they're going to, and they'll all adhere to the SMART principle. And our timeline is, we're looking for September 1st.
Yeah, September 1st, to finalize, yeah.
To finalize the instrument.
When's Labor Day? Is, September first is a Sunday, Labor Day, September second, we have a board meeting on the third.
So we're going to have to have it done before that, but.
Yeah.
We'll just say nine one, because that sounds good. Everybody understands the first answer. And it's going to be based on his ninety day plan.
And you know, we have a work session in August, sixteen seventies, so that might be a good time that we can, you know, share with the rest of the board, come up with. Yeah.
And get feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be good.
Looking at this, I can see how this could be put onto an Excel spreadsheet really well. You know, and make it a lot easier to fill out.
Yeah.
And you refer to the details.
I bet it was.
Yeah.
I bet it was on an Excel spreadsheet, just looks like it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good stuff. I have one other meeting schedule we've already figured out, future agenda topics. I put that on because I want us to look at the old results, and Joan Deary has offered to speak with us, and I think that would be a good idea, to give us a historical perspective on how.
Barbara Nielsen might also.
Yeah, on how this was done, the old.
Yeah.
I think she can give us some feedback, and I don't think she's controversial. So I'll follow up with her and ask her if she can come to our next meeting.
Which is the twenty eighth, Tuesday, the twenty eighth at two thirty. And I was actually thinking about reaching out to Barbara, when I couldn't find anything on the state website to see if there was any state evaluation for a superintendent. Because there were, I saw Iowa, and I saw them, and I gravitated to the Michigan one, because I worked in Michigan, so I thought, oh, let me look at that one. But, so I don't know if at one point, if you just want me to ask Barbara if there's, if she knows of any specific instrument?
You could.
Okay, I'll ask her if she knows of anything. See what she says. I couldn't find anything on the website.
Okay, I'll see if Joan can make the next meeting, and she'll fill us in on this.
Yeah.
So I'm sure after we review it, we'll have some questions. She may be able to answer them, because she seems to have an excellent memory.
Just tell her, don't send a letter frighteningly dangerous.
Yeah, before, beforehand.
I don't have to, you know, she will not be doing that, I can assure you, yeah.
All right, okay, so that's future agenda topics recap, I think we've already recapped. Have like a free session now for another twenty-five minutes, we can just have an open, free discussion about some of the obstacles we're seeing, like we've been doing.
You know, I really think it's important that before his evaluation, I get this instrument done, that before we sit down as a group to evaluate him, he's given the opportunity to fill it out himself and give it to us.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
So that can be done. It's awesome, it's one of the problems that we have with, when you have one guy at the very top, you don't have somebody else above him, in other words, we're the raider, but there's no senior raider that can look at potential, somebody who's been there, a previous superintendent, to be a superintendent mentor. And that, that would be something I would really like to kind of explore, that after we give him our report, and after he's given our self-evaluation, that we have somebody above him who's been there, done that, got the T-shirt, to look at that and look at his evaluation, look at our evaluation, and say, okay, son, I've been there, let me give you some hints. Because we haven't, we haven't been superintendents. And he might get that first one and say, oh my God, oh my God, you know, where am I going to go? To have a mentor is a pretty valuable thing for anybody to have. And of course, I'm used to growing up in a very hierarchical society, where you have people like that who can do that. In our evaluations in military, we have a senior raider who does potential, not performance, potential. And also, hey, son, this is what you ought to do to get a little better, you know, based on my experience, because I've done what you did. And I would like to kind of explore, to find out, well, we have a, we have a former superintendent out at Habersham, who has, who's a lieutenant in a big district in the Chicago area, that might be willing to do, we don't have to pay him anything, this guy would do it for free, to be, and we could come and vet him as a board and ask him if he would be willing to do something like that.
Was that that guy, John?
John.
Yeah, he was, I thought he was in Massachusetts.
Yes, that's right. The other guy, the other guy, Dick, is from Chicago, and he taught superintendents at the University of Chicago.
The other thing, I was thinking, I'm pretty sure Dr. Radwikus was in the Harvard program.
He was.
And sometimes, because he's a graduate of that program, they might have mentors that they would set out.
That's a good idea.
To.
I would introduce him to those people, I'd leave it to him to find his own mentor, instead of us telling him. Introduce him to some.
Introduce him, that's a great idea.
Introduce him to some locals, hey, you know, new, you don't know anybody, hey, here's some folks.
Maybe you like him, maybe you don't.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea, to give him some resources, and he can pick his own mentor.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I just.
It's a good idea. We could use mentors too.
Great coffee. And it's the one she sent us.
He's been to a lot of board meetings, but he's never gotten the calls from the board chair, because the board chair didn't call him, called him his boss. So that's, I told this to Will, you know, he's kind of a guy that we can bring up, right?
Right, I think that if we're clear with our expectations from the beginning, and that's what we, as a board, have to agree on protocol and the process, and then we have to stick to it, and we need to tell him, this is our protocol, this is our process, and if someone on the board is not following it, you need to shut it down. And we need to all be in agreement with that, because otherwise, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't, maybe you all don't agree.
That would be a wonderful world.
Yeah.
That would be wonderful.
I mean.
We know eleven of us is going to be tough.
Yeah, yeah.
We know that people following process is not one of our strengths.
No.
But if we can get nine people to follow the process, that would be great. And you're right, I think the whole key is to have things clear, agreed upon, and then we stick to it. And if we waver, he says, wait a second, come on, you guys said.
Yeah.
And we say, you're right, you know, that's sincerity and stuff, we can't legislate sincerity.
No, no. You know, if I, a prime example, if I might, is that, you know, we have a deadline in our policy for when information is to be to Robin, to be in our, on our agenda. And we don't enforce that policy. And then we complain that we haven't had time to look at things, you know, but if we enforce it from day one, maybe.
That's always the treat, Chuck, as you know, consistency is.
Yeah.
That's how you establish culture.
Yeah.
You've got to be consistent.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's, that is so important, that we de-moss everything. And establish a culture of, one, bad news gets brought up the chain, and bad news gets told to the board and everybody else that needs to know, we don't hide bad news, and that's a moss thing.
I know.
You don't, and you don't kill the messenger, because then you don't get bad news. So it's got to be, okay, we got a problem, let's fix it, let's move forward and take care of it. That's, that's a big thing, and that consistency, because once you go around that, and once you kill the messenger.
Right, yeah, you got to be consistent.
Yeah.
And trust, trust is easily lost, and it takes a long time to gain.
Yeah, my son says it's like a mirror, once it's broken, you can never put it back together exactly right.
Yeah, good analogy.
Yeah, that is good.
That's important, consistency is important. I used to tell, when I went into those turnarounds, I always told them, look, let's start off today by, nobody can make a mistake if they follow the process. Nobody gets skewered if they follow the process, so every problem is a process problem. And if it's not a process problem, then that person's out of here, because they didn't follow the process. So let's all focus on, if there's bad news, something's broken in the process, and it needs to get fixed. Tell us, and we'll fix it, and that kind of takes it away from the personal thing.
Right.
There's only two problems, it's a process problem, or the person didn't follow the process.
Yeah.
And most of the time, when they don't follow it, it's because they don't stay in their lane.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's true. That's true, but, yeah, they're all, they're all pretty much process problems, and that's not the orientation we have. I mean, a lot of folks here don't even seem to know what the process is, just seem to wing it. And that's always a bad sign, kind of a bad sign. But with this new superintendent, we're going to be very specific, open, get agreement ahead of time and.
And you know, I think the fact that he hasn't been a superintendent before is to our advantage, because we, we set the tone for what this board expects, you know, what our expectations are for him.
He just has to realize that there's eleven personalities from eleven different districts with eleven different priorities. And that, and that's one of the things that I really would like to see us do as a board, is I would like to see us, and I did this when I was on the school board, because I had a great superintendent who said, do this, who said, I want you to list your priorities. Your priorities and your goals, each board meeting, and each of those get given to the board chair, board chair compiles them, gives them to the superintendent, and so he can see where there are differences in opinions and differences in priorities. And that's, that's not something that, he's just got to deal with that, he's just got to understand that Guyer thinks, you know, about this and that, and, okay, I know it, I won't be blindsided by it. And, oh, that conflicts with what Will Smith wants to do. So I might need to bring the two of them together to say, your priorities are different, can you tell me why? So I can understand, so I can deal with both of you as individuals. That was very, very helpful for me as a new board member at a school board. And we did that once a year, because your priorities change. And we each had different constituents and different issues.
I'd like to see us do that as a board.
Yeah.
So that I understand what everybody else's priority, because maybe then I could make some sense out of some of the stuff that I don't seem to understand now. I think that would be good exercise for us.
It would, it would, you know, just sitting here trying to think about my, yeah, my priorities, I'm like, okay, I have to articulate that, let me think about that for a minute, they don't, you know, they.
They don't.
They don't just pop up like that, because you have to think, being proactive versus reactive. You know, when they pop up like that, it's just when you're reacting to stuff, but what are my proactive priorities? Absolutely, yeah.
Right, and then you have to make sure those really are your priorities.
Yeah.
Because there's always difference with how you answer the survey and how you act. The trick is always to watch how you've been acting, and then say, wait a second, maybe, maybe I'm not up there in that quadrant. Because it's difficult for all people to do.
I think that's one of the hard things in a new superintendent's report, how he judges eleven balls. And because he has to respond to us as a group and individually, when we have issues that constituents bring up to us, that, you know, how that process is done, and how that's handled, and how responsive. It should be the same response to everybody, you know, and it should be an expectation that if I send an email to the superintendent, within twenty-four or forty-eight, we got to have a standard, that I get a response. And it may be a wait out, now, I'm checking into it, but at least it says, I got your message, I'm staffing it, I'll have it within forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, or whatever it takes, depending on what he needs. That is something that we all need to understand, and we probably ought to say that.
And we need to be reasonable.
Be reasonable, obviously, obviously. But then everybody knows the expectations, and everybody's expectations are the same, and everybody's treated the same. And that's, it's not always been the case in this board.
A hundred percent.
Well, some staffers get bombarded with requests, and that's not right. And the overreaction was the old board, and the old board said, oh, you can't ask the staff anything, they overreacted the other way. There's got to be a happy medium, but you're right, he has to understand what our expectations are. And I think he's going to be hypersensitive, because he knows he's coming in on a six-five.
Yeah.
He knows he's coming in a six-five. He doesn't know the background, and wasn't quite really a six-five.
Yeah.
But so he is going to be, so I think we owe it to him to set our expectations on and stick to it. See if we can pull that off. That's not for this committee, but just, if we make promises, we have to keep, just like he does. All right.
A lot of consistency.
Consistency is, consistency is everything, you know, as they say, once you're consistent, then you can figure out how many clicks you need to get to the target. First, you got to be consistent. First, you got to put every, everything at the same spot, then you can move it and hit the target.